Could you please stand? I'd like to ask Commissioner Perry Langston to lead us into pledge and I'll have a prayer for us.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic where we sustain one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is a prayer I received from the Salvation Army. It's called a New Year's Prayer. Heavenly Father, thank you for the blessed year ahead. May I serve you humbly daily by doing good work that spreads throughout our community. Grant me joy, strength, and wisdom. Help me be generous and kind, and please give me your peace so my heart and mine align. Some days ahead will be easy, but during those times that are hard, remind me of your loving mercy by filling the year with fresh starts. Amen.
Amen.
We'll call the City Commission meeting to order. Thank you all for coming. And before I get to the consent agenda, I would like to say that the Martin Luther King Day celebration yesterday was wonderful. I'd like to applaud all that were involved in it, the organizers, the food preparers, the servers, all involved. The parade was great. It was, I think, a record crowd, and it was a very fitting tribute to Martin Luther King Jr. So, thanks again to all that was involved in that. And with that, we'll go to the consent agenda, which are the minutes of the regular meeting of January 2nd. Everybody's had a chance to look over those. Any additions or corrections? If not, I'll approve, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Mayor, prior to that, I'd like to read in Form 8B.
Yes, sir. Go ahead, Mr. Attorney.
Yeah. Commissioner Lowry, on January 7th, 2020, for a vote held that day at that meeting regarding ordinance 565, did fill out Form 8B memorandum of voting conflict for county municipal and other local public officers. He did that based on the fact he had a business relationship with the developer, and this form will be attached to the minutes.
Anything else?
That's it for that.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Ashbrook. They're second.
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner, I heard two, Commissioner Langston. Any discussion? All in favor, aye? Opposed, same sign. Okay, the Building Department, I think two meetings ago, we got our quarterly update on that. Long Term Recovery Committee, anyone here to report on that?
Yes.
Please come forward. Thank you for being here again, Mr. Attorney.
Yes, Mayor, thank you, and thank you, Commissioner Lowry, for having us on a monthly basis. I don't have a lot of updates for you. We've been busy actually working on gathering data for future grant submissions and doing some grant submissions primarily with the Red Cross. We're hoping to hear back on that in the next couple of weeks. We do have a date where the warehouse is going to be finalized and delivered and installed, which will be sometime between the 13th and the 15th of February. So, any questions?
I got any questions for what this group is doing, and we, sir, appreciate it, for sure.
No problem. Thank you.
Would you remind everyone when your meetings are held for the public that can participate?
Yeah, absolutely. So, we have two meetings per month. The first Wednesday of every month is our board meeting. It's held at the Gulf County Health Department from noon to 1:30. It's open to the public for anybody who wants to attend. We typically do board business primarily then. We also have a community meeting on the third Wednesday of every month, and we rotate that to hopefully enable everyone in the county to be able to attend at least once in a three month period. We rotate between the Washington Improvement Center, the college here, the Gulf County campus, and then Weahichka. So, this week, this Wednesday, we're actually going to be in Weahichka tomorrow from noon to 1:30 at the Methodist Church in downtown Weahichka. And then, next month in February, we'll actually be at the Washington Improvement Center. So, we'd like to encourage everybody in the community to attend.
We appreciate it. Yeah. Thanks again.
I got a question. You said noon, 1:30, that's Central or?
When we meet in Weahichka, it's Central time. When we meet here in the city, it's Eastern Standard. So, it's always noon. Okay, thanks.
Okay, PSJ RA, Mr. David, give your name.
Not a lot of updates, Mayor. Mr. Bill is back in good spirits, and he will be here at 11 o'clock next Tuesday for a workshop, 12 o'clock meeting next Tuesday.
Any questions from PSJ RA? All right, Mr. City Attorney, it's your turn.
Yes, Mayor. The first thing that I have is ordinance 568, which is a small-scale amendment to the land use regulations of the City of Port St. Joe. It's the property regarding the sheriff's office, and that's changing that from commercial to public use. And what I need is a vote to proceed to the first reading.
Okay. Everyone for me with what they're trying to do. That property was owned residential as well as another parcel there that was it commercial or?
C-1A.
C-1A. So, they need to change that, put everything under one zone.
Motion to approve.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Hoffman.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ashbrook. Any discussion, any discussion from the audience concerning it?
I got one question. What are they trying to do? Is that their parking, or what?
This is actually just for the actual zoning, to change it to public. I believe they would be moving forward, trying to do some parking, additional upgrades in the bay, but yes, at this point, it's to change it from C-1A and C-R2B to public.
Because it is public use.
Yes.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Both, same sign. Motion carries five.
Ordinance number 568, the ordinance mending the comprehensive plan, future land use map of the City of Port St. Joe, Florida, by and through procedures required for small-scale map amendments pursuant to authority under state statutes, State Statute Section 163.3187, specifically changing parcel ID number 04842-100R from commercial to public use, and parcel ID number 04842-200R from residential to public use, and providing for repeal of any conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Very good. All right.
The only other thing that I have, your mayor, is school tennis court lease update. And what that basically is, is I just need to know what the terms, and I need my marching orders from the commission.
I, I'm still working with Superintendent Norton on that, try to get a good partnership, possibly if we could get, you know, a partnership with them to help us out with the upgrades, I guess you would say. And right now, we're, I guess we can say we're still, I'm still negotiating with him somewhat to see if we could get a, get a better deal, with the exception of just leasing it and us having it all. But, but I think they're amenable to, to leasing it to us for a certain period of time, and then it would all be ours. But, but if the board would like to just go, go ahead and, and entertain of just nothing but a lease, I don't have a problem with that either. It just means that, that, you know, we've got to spend all our money to upgrade it.
I await my orders.
So, I'm open for discussion.
I'm fine with you still negotiating with him, if that's what you would.
I, I go either way, but I, I think they're, they're getting ready to be in some important negotiations on it, and this may not be a priority item for them. So, we, we can go either way.
I'd like to see us move forward with a, with an agreement for a lease, a long-term lease. And then, once we have that established, that we do in fact have rights to the, to the courts, we could continue to look for funding, both through the grants. We're waiting for a answer on moving some of the funding from the lighting. And then, we've already submitted a request to the TDC for $150,000, which I, I'll speak on a little later. I think we need to finalize that with, with an actual vote, some, some words. But, that would be another avenue to possibly look for funding if after the school board has, has called up with the teacher negotiations for the year, if they have some funding, I'd like to see it applied to the tennis court. If they don't have it, you've heard me say in the past, I would still like to move forward because the tennis players currently are without a tennis court, especially with lights, unless they're, they're still down there playing on what's now virtually a pickleball court.
Right, right. I, I don't have a problem either way. What, what's the pleasure of the board as far as the term of the lease? So, we can, you know, tell the attorney how to write something up, and then I can get with Superintendent Norton, see if he's, if his board would approve it.
I mean, I agree with Commissioner Hoffman, except for the fact that I don't know that we should enter into a lease until we know that there's funding available. We don't have the money to put lights in right now. But if we can come up with something and say, "Look, we're all happy with this lease. We'll sign it once we know that there's funding available." We have no idea where that's coming from either, right? Any ideas on where that would come from?
No. The first thing you have to do is ask for funding. I don't believe anybody's going to approach us to give us the funding. So, I, I think the two could be working in conjunction with each other. If, if the worst-case scenario was to come back, that there was no funding, then you're going to see me support finding some funding in the city to at least resurface the court and re-stripe it. With that court, from what I've been told by the, the gentleman that gave us some prices, he's pretty much an expert tennis court, he said the foundation of that particular court is the best that we have in, in the city. So, I think we would still be in a better posture by spending the money if we have to do it in-house. Lights are another issue. Lights are very expensive. So, we could still use the tennis court after resurfacing, and then continue to look for funding, maybe grant sources to, to tap into for the lighting.
I'm only three years from a liability standpoint. Once we sign a lease, that's our insurance covering that, and that's our risk. If, you know, we're not going to do anything with it, what's the point? But, I, I agree that we're not going to be able to get funding unless we have control over it, so.
Right. And if we don't have a lease saying that it is the property of the city, it's the perfect out for the county and the TDC to say, "Well, we can't help you." And understandably, they can't give money to the schools. So, you know, step one is to take over the property, and then hopefully the TDC would, would send some type of funding to help with, with the tennis courts.
I think that would also put some teeth in what you're about to ask for later with a request for funding, is we could go to them and say, "We have a lease. We negotiated this. We're working with the school board. Will the county be willing to work with us as well?"
Exactly.
So, I'm not opposed to that.
And they're not in bad shape right now. You, tennis, I mean, you can have a good game of tennis down there right now. I mean, the lines are visible, surface is smooth, so anything we do to it will be better.
That's true. We've also got the money that's going to be coming in from the inter-local too, that we can use as match. So, I'm, I'm fine moving ahead. I was fine moving ahead previously.
Well, if we're going to spend money, city, city money, to, to resurface or redo a tennis court that we're leasing that's on school property, what about the tennis courts that we already have, such as behind Washington High Gym? I mean, sooner or later, we're going to have to do something to let people see, see that there is something here where they can come and enjoy themselves behind the recreation center. So, before we think about spending money on, on property that's going to be school property, which they probably, I don't know how long the lease will be, but we need to think about the tennis courts that we have on our property and try to do something with that before we spend money on somebody's property that's eventually going to go back to them. But, I understand working with the school, and I think that them being a part of the community that deal with kids, they shouldn't have a problem with helping us resurface some of our courts, you know, in our parks. So, we need to think about that too.
Commissioner Langston, I looked at those courts yesterday, and behind Washington Gym, and of course, looked at them, five, six, seven years ago too, and they were in bad shape then. But I, I got thinking about, I know, I know you're desired to improve, improve that area, but I was just wondering, what would you think about repurposing the money that we're going to spend on those? Because they've never been used, to my knowledge, by hardly anybody. Repurposing that money and using that money to upgrade the bathroom, which greatly needed, as, as you know. So, just something to think about, something that we will get a lot of use out of in a short period of time. And that, I just went through my mind yesterday when I walked by them. And, but so, I can do both, but I, I don't know.
Mayor, was that insurance money that was going to be spent on that?
I don't know. Money from, from a grant or something that's in the recreation.
For that grant?
Right now, the current money, Mike can tell you more, but currently, you have money available from insurance on there. We put the roof on, and we done some lighting work, but what do we have left as far as I remember mine?
The remaining funds we have from insurance and FEMA were put in the budget, in this fiscal budget for the windows. It was $68,000.
$68,000, got to work with.
That's, that's what we have to work with, the remaining insurance, without allocating funds from another park to that location.
And, you know, playing, playing the shell game a little bit with, with the money. We just got lighting in Washington Gym. It was fantastic yesterday. Do we think about this, and Jim brought this up to me, do we really need windows in there anymore? We got heat, air conditioning, anytime we're in there, the lights are on. So, back in the day, when we didn't have good heating and cooling, you had those windows open for ventilation. Do we want windows, or are we going to repurpose that $68,000 to spend somewhere else? We make it insulated up there and cover those in something that looks nice and for a lot less than $68,000.
Actually, we, I mean, the windows, you know, we can do away with them, but with $68,000, what we do, when we implement that, I mean, would that be something to help the courts since we're going to take the money from the court and put it into the bathroom?
We can do the court so we could do the bathroom or the hall above.
I'd rather start with the bathroom, windows being the bathroom.
I agree with you.
We're going to work on the tennis court.
Yeah, yeah. I think those two items are more priority, and you know that more than I do. But I'm just being there looking around, I know that we need restaurants.
Yes, so we can do that. I'm good with that.
So, anyway, back on the subject of the tennis court lease.
Mayor, as far as terms go, what is a lighting lease with you? Is it 10 years typically when they put up lights?
Forever.
It's forever?
Pretty much.
And the transfer?
Because usually, you pay that monthly bill, monthly reoccurring.
Yeah, I'd say if we do go out, we plan on putting in lights and such, I, I wouldn't. I'd say no, no less than a 20-year lease.
I agree.
That's what I'm thinking.
20 years good for everybody.
And I was thinking 25, so, yeah, I'm good with 20.
Okay. All right, entertain the motion, move forward with it.
I'll move.
As a motion to go, move forward with the leasing the tennis courts from the Port St. Joe High School, Gulf County School Board. There's second.
Second.
Commissioner Hoffman, any further discussion? Discussion from the audience? All in favor, aye? Opposed, same sign. Motion passed by a vote.
I agree with you. We'll talk about some of the other terms.
Okay. All right, thank you, sir. Anything else, Mr. Attorney?
No, Mayor. That's it.
Okay. All right, under old business?
Yes, sir, Mayor. The first item we have is the Government Complex Grant. I think Mayor had a conversation this morning with representatives from the St. Joe.
Yeah, I did. I talked to David Harrelson about the appraisal that they've ordered. It's in the works. I asked him to check on it today and let me know if they're getting close. And he realizes we have a finite time to get this thing done and spend the money. And they know pretty much what we want, so they're, he's checking on that, and he'll have some.
The next item we have is a reference to the Police Department building. Mayor was definitely talking today.
Yes, once again, I think citizens would like to see the Police Department back downtown. I've talked to the chief. He supports that. He would like to, he would like to get a soup-to-nuts type bid, I think would be a complete bid on, on redoing it, heating, air conditioning, the whole nine yards, as well as we would have to have a separate bid for furnishings. And, and we would have to get with the chief, he would have to make us a list on, on the needs desk, you name everything to start a new office. And then, once we get that, we'd have two separate bids. We'd have one contractor doing the whole thing, not, not farming out AC and all these other small items, one contractor for that. And then, we'd have one bid for, for furnishings, looking forward to moving those furnishings to a new building in the future. So, it wouldn't be like we're going to leave them there when we get a new facility. So, so, I would, I would love to see us go out and bid. It's not a cost of seeing them. Let's see where we are and, and move on with getting our police department back home.
Motion to rebid.
Okay, here's a motion by Commissioner Ashbrook to rebid the renovation of a police building.
And the partridge. Are you? Yeah. Everything. I'll second that.
I'll second. Okay. Further discussion? Anybody? Anybody? Okay, all in favor?
I have one, one question. What's, what's in the budget insurance-wise? What number are we needing to be under?
I don't have the insurance amount with me on the Police Department, but, and the FEMA recovery is still in process. But we have submitted a list of furniture to be reimbursed and the damages. And FEMA will, will up whatever recovery we get based on the actual bid.
Did we submit the last bid to FEMA?
We did submit the last bid, but that wasn't all-inclusive. I think that was just the electrical and, and a few other items. So, so FEMA's indicating they will work with us, but, but they have not finalized those numbers. Unfortunately, I don't have the insurance numbers in front of me.
I thought it was somewhere around about $80,000.
That's what I'm thinking. Under 100.
Yeah.
And the last bid was like $150,000, $160,000. It was pretty high.
I don't remember what.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, aye? Opposed, same sign. Motion passed five and a vote. We'll move along with that. Thank you very much.
The next item is a reference to the Gateway Apartments Phase Two. We had a brief discussion in our last meeting.
Commissioner Ashbrook, we're talking today. Yeah, I received a letter from the Paces Foundation, basically telling us, giving, outlining their request. I think you all have received a copy of their request, and I believe we have the traffic engineer possibly here today, a representative from Royal American and Paces Foundation, so we can get all of our questions answered. If somebody wants to come up and take it forward.
Commissioner, for the opportunity to address? Any additional materials?
Michael Bauer with Paces Foundation, and appreciate the opportunity. Open the packet, it's the first thing we'd like to look at is the pictures of actually the parking lot. Although, I will say that buildings are in the pictures as well, and the construction of the existing portion of the buildings are complete on the outside, absent of the gutters that are going in this week. And we're very thankful to be able to upgrade the property with Hardy Blank, rather than the violent signing that was there. And we do have some further insurance negotiations going on, but there's some interior units, 16 units that are damaged, that we will start construction very soon. So, let's go on to existing. Also in the packet is the request letter, and the traffic study is included there. But the summary of the request letter is three items that we're asking the council to consider, and that is the waiver of the two and a half parking spaces down to one and a half, and then the second entrance, as discussed and requested, and then a reduction of the impact fees. I had actually put one-third, I believe, in the letter, but as I understand, the previous project had a 25 percent, so we are asking for the same reduction. If you go to the next document, there is a funding award that was in the packet of the funds that came through the Florida Housing Finance Corporation. These are federal home funds that were awarded. I wanted you to see the details of the submissions and the award. There were 20 submission for Hurricane Michael recovery budgets. Seven awards took place. With the absence of the other project, there are only six funded projects that will go forward. That is, that is really a gift to, to our community. We were initially asked to help with additional units, and we reached out to these funds, and we're lucky enough to be awarded. These are federal home dollars through, through the federal government and then through the Florida Housing Finance Corporation. We, we are very thankful to get those to be able to fund 26 additional units on this property. I would like to make one distinction, that this is an extension of the existing property. This is really not a true second project, as we had talked about before. We made commitments before that we would do a second entrance if the, if we did a second project. There are 10 additional acres there on the property that if it came up, we had talked before when we originally came to the council about doing some senior apartments, another, another complete project. And today, we're just asking for the support of the additional 26 units. The, the next document you have there is the, is the plat that has the second entrance noted in yellow. We, we have had estimates of this. The entrance would cost about, the entrance itself would cost about $400,000 in hard construction costs to do that. It, it would go across the wetlands, as it's drawn here. It was asked of us about crossing the wetlands. It is possible, but it is very difficult when you're using federal funds. And we, if we desert more than 5 percent of the wetlands, then there is a large step, eight-step process that you have to go through, and pretty much every step is asking, are there alternatives not to desert the wetlands? And because it was asked about crossing the wetlands, the last document that's included are the eight steps that show the restrictions to, to cross the wetland. So, in, in the funding of this project, I was asked yesterday, is, is it a viable project? And with this vote, yes. But I worry that we are at a crossroads, and I really need your support and help to be able to add these additional 26 units. I would, I would encourage you to vote as a positive. We're here to answer questions. We have our property management company, who handles the daily activities, and we have the traffic study planner here to answer any questions about the traffic study.
Yeah, I've got, I've got a question about the traffic study. On page one, help me understand that in the morning, there are only nine vehicles exiting the property. Is that what this says?
Yes, sir. It's saying, I'm Big Cleveland HSA Consulting Group, we're going to raise the transportation plan. What that is saying is the total trip generation would be nine trips.
So, what you're saying, there are nine vehicles? So, what you're saying, there are nine vehicles leave there in the morning, and eleven come back in the afternoon, out of all the cars?
No, sir, that's not exactly what it's saying, there's nine total trips in the AM peak, two of which are entering trips and seven are exiting within that hour, and then, now, it's not the same car exiting and entering within the hour, it's just the count within that AM peak, and then, in the PM peak, there's eleven total trips, seven of which are entering and four are exiting.
So, that possibly is eight-thirty hour or something along with that?
This isn't a twenty-four hour clock, this is just one hour in the morning, one hour at night.
The AM peak was seven to eight AM, and then, PM is four thirty to five thirty.
That really doesn't tell me about the traffic that's coming in and out of that facility on a daily basis, unless you can extrapolate that out for me and give me an idea.
We didn't do a daily count, because at the time we did this study, really, the purpose was per-traffic concurrency, so we focused more on the roadways that are classified in the comprehensive plan, US ninety-eight, seventy-one, so, at the time, we didn't, the purpose of the study wasn't to assess Broad Street or any of the local streets, but we did do a count, a turning room account at Broad Street and Clifford Sims, right at the entrance to the apartments, and it wasn't a daily count, but we counted two hours in the AM and two hours in the PM. From the volumes within those peak hour counts, it's safe to estimate the daily volume on Broad Street would be in the range of two to three hundred per day.
Two to three hundred per day?
Right.
And that's not in your study?
No.
I think, Mr. Myers, I could...
Yeah, you're, go ahead.
How many units, you've got sixteen units that are not being used, right, is that what I just heard?
That's correct.
So, that's gonna affect the study as well, is that correct?
Um...
Or did you?
I don't know if that was the case, when we did the count, which was in July, but the trips that you see there on page one, the nine AM trips, eleven PM trips, that's strictly based on what's being proposed and not what's there now, if there are additional units there that are existing and they're not being used, then, yeah, that could, if they were occupied, that would bump up the existing trips somewhat.
I was over there last week at the complex, and I, there wasn't a whole lot of traffic that I seen, but I didn't realize there were sixteen units that weren't being used. Also, too, they're only asking for another twenty-six units, not, how many unit, total units you have now?
Fifty.
Fifty total, so, basically, half of what we're...
So, if the two hundred trips, another half of that, then, we're possibly three hundred trips a day, down Broad Street, mostly down Broad Street.
But your study didn't really focus on the traffic flow of the two roads that are mainly used for entering and exiting the property?
No, we collected data on what was going on there, but the study wasn't specifically to assess the capacity of those roadways.
Can you understand why I'm not real thrilled to hear that? Because our concern, or my concern, I'll just speak on my concern, my concern is to allow a project to move forward with the least amount of negative impact with the people that are gonna be affected, and the people that are gonna have a negative impact would be those very people that are living on those two blocks, so, I wish we would have had some data to make me feel that the impact, while we all have to agree it's gonna be a negative impact, if you add additional housing and more people move into that housing, a lot of those people will have vehicles, and they're gonna, they're gonna increase the negative impact, so, we really need to be focusing on the people that live in that impact zone, and I spent a little time, and I spoke to a couple people, Mr. Smiley was nice enough to ride me around and speak to one neighbor that lives right there at the intersection, and I think that if we're gonna move forward, then, we have to give the people that live in that area ample time to be heard, and that's where I am today, I think it's a great idea to help with housing, but we have to look at a way to figure out, can we build this road? Last meeting, we discussed the possibility of partnering with the county, I spoke to Mike yesterday on the phone, we talked about reaching out to Representative Sho, Senator, our Senator Monford, and then finding out, one, when does the money expire, right, currently, there's no deadline on the money, I understand there's concern that the money will eventually go away, we don't wanna lose the money, but we need to be focusing on doing a project and doing it properly, not rushing into it because we have concerns of the deadline, that's what I would like us to really spend the time meeting and discussing, I think a workshop would probably be a great idea, get all the parties together, see if the county's interested in helping the city and helping build this road that has to go through, that's where I am today.
Can I say something?
Yes, sir, you're next.
I know that we really need housing, we definitely need housing, and that's a main priority, and I would go along with the project, I think we do need to have a workshop with all the neighbors in that area, and if we can come up with something to make this, I mean, with a compromise, that will make this thing happen, you know, I'm gonna hide it one-hundred percent, I think that the traffic is somewhat bad sometimes, and I think that we could move forward in some type of agreement to allow both parties to be satisfied with what's going on, and also, not leaving out the people that live in that area, I think it's important that we voice our opinion, I live in that area, but if we can get them in a workshop or something, see how they feel about the apartments or anybody within the city, you know, come out and voice your opinion about what's going on, I think it'll make it easier for us and easier for you guys. I certainly appreciate you coming in and building it and wanting to build the apartments, but I don't think we need to move real fast, I think we need to think about some things before we go into it, but we can have a workshop to see, I'm not saying I'm against it, I wanna make sure everybody understands that, because I know we definitely need housing, I just wanna make sure that we do this thing in the right way, so that everybody be satisfied with what's going on with this project, we have people in our neighborhood that really does need this, the rental houses in the North Port St. Joe area, I can speak for that, the rental houses in the North Port St. Joe area have been either destroyed or they're in bad condition and insurances are moving slow, so, I feel this is a good project, and I think that it will work, but I think that we just need to come together and have a compromise, sit down and talk with the people within that community to see what we move forward with this, I mean, I think Mr. Hoffman said that we didn't, there's no deadline to this, so, I feel that we don't have to rush into it, I think that we need to just take our time with this project and get everybody within that area, that community, and see how we can make everybody happy, because we definitely, definitely need housing.
I have a comment, and it's, I don't disagree with anything that anybody said, I feel, however, that the workshops kinda get skewed, the end users don't often come to those things, the people that are looking for the housing, you know, aren't always here saying, we need housing, you know, they're either at work or, you know, commuting from another town, I just feel like, you know, I have to help represent the people that are gonna be the end user as well, you know, the public that may be affected by this will come out, you know, they're gonna be here, but who's gonna represent the people that are gonna be the end users, and that's my only concern, is that we're really representing the people that are gonna wind up living there, you know, the last time this went around, we heard a lot of people that had complaints or questions, that had a place to live, you know, it's tough, it's tough to kinda weigh, what would those people want, you know, that are looking for a place?
Well, I'm not saying that we not, don't do the project, I'm saying, let's come together with a compromise so that we can move forward.
Sure.
At least you can listen to what they have to say, it doesn't, it doesn't say that we're gonna change our minds or anything like that, but just, at least we should listen to what they have to say, they're not, yeah, they have homes, but they live in that area, and they're gonna be affected by things that go on in that area, so, we need to bring some people, bring the people out that lives in that area just to get an opinion from them, it doesn't mean that they're gonna sway our decision one way or the other, but it's just, we represent them, and it's respectful, I think, for us to allow them to come and see what they have to say about a project being built in that area, that's the only thing that I'm saying, I'm not gonna say it's gonna sway me either way.
I just wanna make sure that everyone's represented, you know what I'm saying? Not just, not just the residents of the neighborhood, but the people that will be future residents as well, you know, they also need to have a say, I feel that way.
I definitely understand, but I do think we as a board need to have a workshop to show we are giving folks that are affected the opportunity to be heard without going forward with a motion and a vote to do something without giving them an opportunity. Also, Commissioner Hoffman was talking about impacts, I would like to hear from the chief on any impact the current Gateway Apartments have had on your department.
Are we talking about call volume?
I would, yeah.
The day it opened, it became the place we go to the most now in North Port St. Joe, and I can't give you those numbers, but I can tell you that's the reality.
Okay, so, there are others impacted besides the citizens, so...
Chief, out of curiosity, what's the breakdown of types of calls, is it violation, is it drugs, is it violent crime?
I don't know that we've had any drug problems there per se, but I mean, it's anything from theft to vandalism, mostly domestic-related issues.
It's probably because you have more people in one confined area, I think it's fair to say, you build a hotel, you're gonna have calls, there's a lot of people there.
True.
And I'd like to just say one more thing, I agree with Commissioner Langston, I support the idea, and I've told everybody that has asked me about it, I support it, I'm willing to give them two of the three items that they're negotiating today for, asking for, parking spaces, I would vote to support your offer, the reduction in fees, I told you yesterday over the phone, I will support the twenty-five percent, because I found out that's what we voted on in the past, what's fair for one is fair for your group, but I can't support just going into an agreement to waive this entrance and exit only because it affects other people besides myself, and I think we need to do our due diligence and make sure that we have information available for those people. The study that you did really didn't help, it didn't focus on the impact of traffic up and down those two blocks, and that's where it should have been focused.
It was focused on the direct entrance, not those ulterior streets.
Yeah, yeah, and I think you really gotta branch out and give the opportunity to study the impact of cars going and coming, going up and down the road, the number I just heard was two hundred, and that really surprised me, so, that's all I have, Mr. Anderson.
Any more questions for Mr. Kim before I open up?
I've just got a comment, and, you know, if you look at the map where they drew the yellow potential roads in, people are gonna use what's most convenient, you know, there's no guarantee that if there's a second entrance, that they're gonna ever use it, people are gonna take what's most convenient to where their current parked, just something to keep in mind, that just because you build it, doesn't mean it's gonna get used.
It's true. Let me say this, it's a road in the rear of the apartments, it's a dirt road that goes to industrial...
The tracks.
Yep, industrial road, and we could get together with the county or the city and see if we can get that road paved, you know, get the road paved, that'll be another entrance and exit from the apartments coming from the back way for, I mean, the industrial road here, you know, let's get, we need to, those are the things that we need to focus on, how we can, as a city and a county, can come together and maybe help build this road that's coming from the rear.
Another entrance in.
Yeah.
Railroad tracks would be the only issue, but I don't know what that would cost to go above or around or under.
That's why I was just saying, just, we need a little more time to figure how we can get this thing done without affecting both the citizens in that area and not hurting the Paces Foundation, which is trying to do their diligence in providing housing for what we really need, so, why can't we get with the county and find out if they got money in the budget or we find some type of money, get into contact with either St. Joe Company, I don't know, St. Joe Company or the railroads, you know, and figure something out where we can get that road paved, because it's already there, it's already there, it just has to be paved, and I don't know, but if the city and the county could get together, negotiate, and get some money, and help pave that road, maybe that'll help everything move forward.
Very good, all right, any more questions for him?
If I may, we're gonna stop, and then, we gotta let August in. Yeah, sure, absolutely, Commissioner Hoffman, you mentioned the two of the three are such as that, I will say that the entrance itself is the most costly of the three, four hundred thousand, and additional cost on top of the four point seven million, that's almost ten percent of the project, so, it's tough to do that.
Yeah, I understand, it's not really a fair trade to say, I'll give you the two, I'll give you that.
Let me ask you this, how quickly are you trying to go ahead and move through with this project?
If we get a yes vote today approving the items that you asked for, we would immediately go to planning and engineering to move forward with the project.
So, how much of a delay will it take, I mean, say, if we, a couple of weeks, four weeks from now, if we go to the county or we have a workshop in a week and a half, and then, we figure something out with the county in another week or two, try to get this road paved, get money for this road to get paved, how far would that put you back into, what is your, what are you looking for, what are you looking for to have this project done? I mean, what...
Well, there's gonna be some engineering time, certainly, and when the start of construction would be, depends on the engineering and the completion, going through the approvals, but this is the first step to get that, the impact of the second entrance is really drastic to the cost, we would like to start as quickly as possible, and we're certainly open to yield community, in any case, even if this doesn't turn the road into a doctor, we wanna be good stewards.
I definitely wanted to go through, but I wanna take some ti, I just, the reason I'm asking you that is that I think we need to take some time and try to figure out, I mean, we need to get with the county and see if they can get some money together to get this road paved, or either, and also have a workshop with the people, just letting them know what's coming, how you feel about it, it's not a workshop saying, okay, they said it's right here, so, it's not gonna happen, you know, it's just a workshop to get an opinion of how many people really want, that's gonna be affected, how do they feel about it, and I think it's our job as city commissioners to at least listen to them and not just rush into it, and like I said, I'm a hundred percent for it, if we can get this road put together, it'll be even better, I think that it'll take some pressure... I think that it'll take some pressure off all of them, because we really do need this housing. So, if, if you saying that if, if we wait, say another, if we come back another month and they won't delay you too much?
So, so negotiation, can we say four weeks, come back in four weeks, and in the meantime we can have a community meeting?
I think Commissioner Langston, of course, hearing what I'm hearing today, I'm sure we're not gonna have a motion to go forward today, but as soon as we approve it, I mean, their clock, it starts, but it's, it, it stops at the same time in that, that you know at that point in time you're gonna get the money because we've approved it. So, so we don't have to worry about this deadline we've been hearing about, so, so I, I hate to put a finite, say, come back four weeks, we might not be ready in four weeks. So, if, if you wouldn't mind, Commissioner Langston, if you get with Commissioner Quinn and start feeling him out as far as helping possibility to get that road paved, if we have to see if the paper mill, I mean, the Saint Joe Company owns it, we'd have to get easements, we'd, you know, all these things, it, it just takes time, so...
Sure.
I mean, we got, probably be two weeks before we'd have a workshop, so, so we all need to know the need, but we have to proceed cautiously.
I'll, I'll get with Commissioner Quinn and...
Okay.
What about himself?
I mean, we have to give notice, if we wanna do a workshop, we need to give sufficient notice to the public. We're at, at January 21, we got a workshop next week on the 28th. Our next meeting is February 4th. Possibly workshop on February 11 between the next two meetings, anybody got a problem with that? Okay, would they, would they like to make a workshop at 6:00 in the evening?
May I offer to onsite have a Sunday afternoon ice cream social, picnic, something? Have everyone come to the community?
At the units? Invite the community to see?
You can invite the public, not just the commission, but invite the public, yeah. That's, that's your choice, yeah. You own it, stuff, yeah.
I mean, would that satisfy for, for the discussion that you're talking about?
For the workshop?
Yeah.
No, no, we gotta have the workshop here.
Okay, all right.
So, what, you guys saying about February 11?
At 6:00.
No, I'm gonna be out of town.
You're out of town then?
I'm not sure, I'm, I'm looking it up.
Okay. How about the other guys? 11, good, what time of day? You wanna, you think we'd have more participation if we do it after 5?
Yeah, get people to town, get all, get all working.
Okay, all right, let's talk about 6:00 then, on the 11. Commissioner Hoffman?
That's, that's good with me.
All right, me. And hopefully Commissioner Lowery can...
Yeah, just go ahead and plan it, and I'll, I'll see if he can get around it.
Okay, all right, we'll, Ms. Charlotte, if you would take note of that, we'll have a workshop on the 11 concerning the Gateway Apartment expansion.
Mayor, one thing I was gonna indicate too was regardless of what we do at this point, you still gotta come back for a development order process.
That's right.
So, at this point, basically, they're asking for a couple of items that are generally talked about all throughout the development order process. So, what would have to happen is, I think what they're looking for is a green light on these couple of items to go back to their engineering, to get all the work done, that would need to come back to your planning board and then come back to you for a forward development order process.
Right, right.
Do you feel comfortable to engage the engineers to spend, it's probably $150,000 in drawing the plans?
We'll, we'll get to that point, hopefully.
Hopefully. I would appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we've got some folks in the audience, ladies first, Mr. McElroy.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
We need everyone to please sign in, the gentleman that spoke, I do not have his If everyone would please sign in before they speak, write their name, it will be much easier.
Thanks, ma'am.
Thank you, sir.
I'll mention this, oh, I swear, Christie McElroy, 1311 Woodward Avenue. A, a couple of things, I was on the planning board the, the first time around, and I don't know if we got a little bit of amnesia going on here, it's fine, but there were plenty of people because they were wearing t-shirts, and Mr. Mayor, I'm sure you remember, they were wearing t-shirts to support the project. It is fair balance to have workshops. This affects how our police force works, how our toilets flush, traffic, everything. I wanna ask y'all something, though. How many sidewalks are along those roads? How many sidewalks are along those roads?
What road you talking about?
Well, whether you got...
You talking about Broad?
Whether you got Broad, or, or Apollo, or any of those roads?
None.
None.
Exactly. I don't know if y'all have ever dove into their numbers, a lot of stuff, engineers, architects, et cetera, that's all under their umbrella, okay? Management, et cetera. And so, the margins are good. I would suggest, if you're talking about putting 26 more homes in that area, you think about the children that are already living in the houses that are along that area. Mr. Quinn has a young child, gonna need to go to school, gonna need to go to the ballfields. We need to be thinking about the future here. How do our children move in and out? How do our elderly move in and out? And again, I don't think everything should be just on the taxpayers. Grants are great, DOT is great, but again, the profit margins on these projects, and what, what is the amount that these folks are saying they're making for these 26 units? What's the amount?
The amount?
Five million, three million, two million?
I think it's 5.7.
Four point seven?
Four point seven.
That's pretty good. So, I think, again, yes, Commissioner, you are right on. We need to have workshops. You also need to look at the previous planning board and the questions that they asked, and you also need to see what the promises were from PACE, if they expected. Go back and look at the minutes. Look at the, the county's minutes, Mr. Quinn was kind enough to have a workshop out there. You gotta look at the history and the facts before you just say, and I, if I were these gentlemen, I'd want a decision today too. Being a business person, I'd want it too. But they don't live here. They live somewhere else, as does their crews and their architects, okay? So, I have one other question. Is anyone, anyone, staff or commission, working as a consultant for these people?
I'm not.
Not.
I'm not.
Okay, just wanna make sure. Just wanna make sure. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Now, Mr. Smiley, come on.
Yes. How you guys doing?
Good, Dan.
You know, we don't talk about traffic study. First, I wanna ask, does this really, I mean, what I got to give is, I don't have it wrote on a piece of paper. I moved into the neighborhood in 1990. So, I've been there since 1990, I was born and raised over there, I watched the first set of houses get built over there. Matter of fact, I helped, there was a man who built them, his name was, Mr., they called him Mr. Jughead, Jughead, but he was a real good builder. You probably remember him, Mr., but anyway, when all that first got started over there, so I, I know, I'm not going on no piece of paper, somebody sitting here telling me what tough plays, I'm going on with Tan Smiley though. Ain't no two hundred cars come over there in a week. Me and Commissioner sat right there and watched somebody get out their car in the middle of the road, go in the house.
Stay far.
Okay, they went out, got out in their car, parked in the middle of the road, went in the house, did what they had to do, come and got them, now that's the, that's the problem we got with the traffic. The problem that we got, we need houses. Y'all guys don't wanna address the houses. It's a set of five railroad tracks behind those apartments. To go across that, that's gonna be a job. Okay? You got wetlands all around it. I know this project when it first got started, I'm the one who got it started. Now, what I'm trying to say, from this table, this table forward, well, none, don't know you guys can put in an application to live out there because you make too much, okay? We putting out there for something, for somebody who need it. People lost their homes, people don't have no place to stay. We got people right here, four and five people living in a house together. We need those apartments. I understand what you're saying about a workshop. We was here a while back, you know it was a conversation because I brought it up back then. I talked to Mr. Robert James personally, myself, who live right across the street from him. Tan, I don't even know they at them. Took you by, I talked to Mr. Jenkins personally, have no problem with it. Talked to Mr. Davis down there, personally, have no problem with it. Talked to Mr. David Lewis over there, personally, all these people I talked to personally. Because I understand what you're saying, Mr. Rex, don't you listen to what I'm saying, though?
I listen.
While we sitting here waiting for the, ain't the draw on the table, people's needs are what they live. That's what I'm saying. We got it. That other, that, that other group coming here, there was a 5-0 vote to allow them to build their apartments. When they find out that they couldn't make money off it, they have time for it no more. They couldn't chop it up and do it the way they want to, they have time for it no more. Come on, guys. Every time something in that neighborhood gonna happen in over there, we got to think about it, we got to do this about it, we got to do this about it. I sit right there and I watch stuff get passed all day long, and I'm just saying, I see it. If Tan Smiley get up here and talk about it, I'm gonna tell the truth, and I'm gonna tell it just like he is, I ain't got, I ain't got to sit up here and lie. We need those apartments, right? If we didn't need them, I wouldn't be sitting here, traffic study? I sit at my house every day, and I might see three, four cars pass through there, I'm counting. Ever since I come to you guys the last time, I start counting the cars. I sit right there, right? Boy, I sit right there counting them, I just count, look at them, tell me the cars you see. So, that's no problem. Now, I'm not going on a piece of paper, I'm going from being there, living there, I done raised all my kids there. I even had a, in-house daycare at one time. We don't have that problem. Well, the problem that we need is housing. Now, I ain't got no personal vendetta against nobody, this ain't nothing personal. I'm looking at what they need, 'cause I pray to God with, when we put them out there, I pray to God Tan Smiley never have to move out there. But you don't know it tomorrow, huh? Mr. Smiley might just start sending gift codes to them. Come on, guys. Come on.
And there's not, there's not one commissioner up here that's against the housing.
I understand, but...
But we have to do our due diligence, I hope you understand that, and we can't just flip the switch without doing our due diligence. It'd be doing a disservice to other people that, and so, you know, I know you disagree and...
Well, Mr. Rex, I don't have no problem with us doing this, but when we do this, let's do it all the way around the board. You just gave another company the right to do it. Do it have anything to do with what was gonna set? But you gave them that permission, and they didn't present you with nothing.
I disagree with that, but we...
I mean, where is that? I didn't see it, I looked for it, and believe me, when I do my homework, I go deep into it, because last time, I went to people's houses, knocked on the doors to find out about this apartment, because if they didn't want somebody to say something about it, believe me, I would not be up here saying something about it. That's why I went to every individual house and knocked on the door. It's something that we need. It's something that we need, babe, guys.
I know, you're passionate about it.
Yes. Now, I'm passionate about, I'm passionate about helping people who need help.
I know, that's what I just said.
And the position that you guys are sitting there, when you get to the point you ain't passionate about helping people, it's time to move, 'cause that's what those positions for.
Thank you, Tan, appreciate your comment.
Mr. Rex, we need the apartment.
Mr. Rex is not against it.
Let's get that vote on the board, then. All you got to do is vote, say, "I know, I won't come here, you won't see me no more."
Say your name, please.
You know, I'm, I'm slow, but I'm sure. Well, anyway, I just have one question for the builders. Now, they said the 16, were the 16 units still down or 18?
16.
16. Now, I hear that they are full with mold, and that's the reason why they're still down, and I just wanna ask them, is that a true statement or not?
Anybody like to comment on that from the PACE's group?
Yes, there was water intrusion, mold, the, the units have been remediated and cleared, and they will be rebuilt to proper codes without any issue.
Very good.
Okay, are they gonna be rebuilt before you build the 26?
Yes.
Thank you.
I know.
Next, come up, please.
Hello.
Okay. I have, Marquita Thompson, 321 Avenue. I've heard a lot about the logistics of these, I, I hear the talks of logistics, and my question is, and this may not be the forum for this type of dialogue, I'm not sure, but my whole thing is, has anyone worked with them on their application process? I mean, you have to consider the community where you have these things placed, and if your application requirements are restricting a good bit of the population of that particular community due to, you know, your strict application requirements, it's not doing any good, it's not for the edification of that community anyway. You can put 100 there, but if nobody's gonna be able to qualify, or they're gonna be excluded, then it's really pointless anyway. So, I just ask that, in all of your considering and all of the workshops, I implore you to, for someone to work with them on application processes and their exclusions, because a lot of people that are in that community are being excluded anyway, so they can't go there anyway, so, I mean, it's, it's almost pointless.
I'd also participate and bring that forward. That's, that's very good.
321, I just got a question, as you talk about exclusion, I just wanted to make it clear, what you talking about exclusion, because someone may have a federal record and they not be able to get an apartment, and if that is the case, it's not that they form a discrimination. Now, we gonna have discriminatory practice, prevent an individual from looking to build an apartment. If that be the case, I, I would be against that. Now, I ask you a question.
I don't know, you'd have, that'd be an answer for you folks.
Is that, is that a true statement?
Yeah.
I hope it's false.
Let me sign it in.
Yeah.
Sign in, state your name, please.
Yes, sir.
Okay, good morning, my name is Judy Williams, and I'm with Royal American Management. We manage Gateway Apartments. So, to answer your question, if we allow felons, possibly, depending on the conviction and the time since then, um, we conduct a credit criminal screening policy or process. And, but we use a graduated policy that's based on the type of crime and the length of time since the conviction. We do allow for appeals if an application's been denied due to criminal history, um, whereas an applicant can come in and explain any mitigating circumstances. So, I hope that helps.
Although, uh, but unless, you know, this, you know, let's say someone have like a child molestation, you know, something like that, where they can't be around. I can understand that, but for other bit of small crimes, you know, I think you need to spell out what type of crime will be exempted.
Yes, sir, and, and there's a broad area, um, so if you have somebody that you know, like, we encourage anyone to apply, and if there's any concerns that come up, we have a fair housing department that also helps us to review any applications. Um, and then, like I said, we do have that criminal credit screening, and then we take the graduated policy one step forward, and we look at the type of crime and the length since the conviction. So, any questions, please feel free to stop by if it's in particular. Um, if somebody has come applied, we will review the, the screening process and go from there. But as far as to answer one question, do you allow this or this? You know, I would want to look at the screening to see, you know, because it, it will tell all. If that makes sense.
Okay, I just make sure y'all spell it out, like you say, the Fair House Act? Make sure that we are in total compliance with the Fair House Act.
Yes, sir, and we do have a fair housing attorney that we consult with in reference to our resident selection criteria, and so, and the HUD guidelines and everything else.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, sir, thank you.
I got a question.
Yes, sir.
What is the, what is the timeframe from, um, from when the person gets out of prison? And then, um, say, if I get out of prison and I've been out three years, and I come and I apply, what's the timeframe that I need to be out before I even be considered, uh, for, to, to move into apartments?
Again, we would wanna look at your screening, um, to see, you know, we would wanna look at your overall credit criminal screening, and we do have that graduated policy in place. And we do have our fair housing department that helps us with that as well. So, I don't wanna answer a specific question without looking at a screening to say, you know, what type of crime? Because we do look at, you know, the type of crime and the time, length of time since the conviction.
Well, I, I understand violent criminals or, um, child molestation, anything like that. I understand you not even wanting them to be in that, that, that apartment complex. But what I'm saying is, we need something on paper saying that, look, if you've been convicted felon, felon for over, what, three years, um, and it's non, and it's nonviolent, a nonviolent crime, and you haven't got any, any trouble, we will allow you to be in this apartment complex. Now, you saying looking at the, um, well, by looking at the screenings, I mean, I understand that too. But if I'm just getting out of prison, I'm just getting home with my family, I found me a good job, we're working hard, um, and I come to you in three years, um, I get this screening, but, um, you will, you, you don't allow me to get there because I only been out for three years? And, and, and you think that I should be out, uh, longer than that? Is that what you thinking, or is that policy?
Well, we do have a policy in place, and, and like I said, we use a, um, a graduated policy, and it's based on the crime and the length of time since the conviction, that we would look at that. But to answer specifically, like, on a case by case, I don't think that I could do that, because I would need to see the screening, what all is on the screening process, you know, in order to review it. And then, if the property manager had questions, then of course it goes to the regional manager. If the regional manager has questions, it comes to me. Along with all of that, we also reach out to, when it related to crime-related incidents, you know, we do reach out to our fair housing department for those guidance, you know, um.
So, so.
But we also allow appeals, so if there's some, you know, if an application has been denied due to criminal history, we allow appeals for the applicant to explain any mitigating circumstances.
I'm not, the appeal that, I'm just, I'm just, just a question that I have, but it's not anybody that I know that I, I, right now, that has applied. I just wanted to, uh, make sure that, um, when, when, when a person is, uh, gets out of prison, that they can, that they done their time, that did their due justice. I don't think that they should be held down without a place to stay. Uh, if they, if they've been walking the straight road, we talking about for a good three years, I don't think that they should be held down or held back because, uh, of, because of, you do the screening and you say, look, I don't like this, I don't like this particular person, I don't like the way he look. Not saying black or white, it's, it's because we got, um, whites, uh, Latinos, uh, people of color, been incarcerated too, you know, also, but I just wanna make sure that we, we can look at a policy and say, look, if I fill this application out, shoot, I haven't been out no, uh, for three years. So, if I fill it, it's no sense of me even trying to fill this application out, but if I done got out, got me a job, and I say to myself, look, I've been working for three years, the application say, um, if I hadn't been convicted of anything, any other crime in these three years, I know I can get this apartment because I, I fit any other criteria. You know, I, I just feel like it should be, um, a, a, a year should, a, a certain time should be implemented in that contract without having you to go screen and say, look, I just don't like this person, he don't look right. And then that take a lot off you too, you know? That's all the thing that I'm saying.
I'm gonna give you my card, and any questions that you have, please reach out, and I'll get you.
And, and, uh, Mr. Lysen, and Marvin too.
Yes.
Uh, the purpose of the workshop is to get most of this answered.
Yes, sir.
I mean, we can beat this thing to death all day, and it's not fair to them and other people. Uh, we'll have a workshop, and we'll, that'll last long as we need to, we get questions.
And I, I recommend that any questions that you guys have before the workshop, please reach out to the commissioner, give him your questions, he can reach out directly to me, so we can make sure, because, you know.
If it would be, uh, very advantageous to us, if you could email us a copy of the application process and your policies for, for admittance, uh, that way we'd be somewhat educated. We may not have to ask all these questions we're trying to ask you today.
And that's what I was gonna ask, can you let us review, yeah, the policy and everything?
She'll send us, she'll send us the city commissioner, those be public records, you can, you can get them from anybody.
Thank you.
Hope you modify it too.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you. All right, let's move on to the next, uh, on the new business.
Yes, sir, Mayor, the first two items on there, we had a brief discussion in our last meeting in reference to Commissioner Terrence in qualifying the fee slash petition process. Uh, we did give you some of the paperwork that outlines getting your charter, as well as the Florida statute on it. One thing to keep in mind, Ms. Pierce did reach out to the supervisor election, and as far as the qualifying fee petition process, he felt this year didn't, was not adequate time to put that in place for three years, no understanding. But it is there for discussion.
Okay.
I'll speak on it, if I have, may I, Mr. Mayor? My intention is to encourage the residents of St. Joe to be more involved, not only attending the meeting, but running for the seats that we sit in. I, I think that's important. Um, and I looked at, now that I've been in this seat for almost two years, the term that I'm in will come up for an election process, uh, soon. And, and I, I started asking myself, you know, have I learned what I need to know to do an efficient job? And I, I think I've applied myself properly, but I think it's also fair to say, I feel like there's a lot that I still don't know. I believe a four-year term would give people the opportunity to learn the job and be more efficient in the job. So, I think it keeps people from being interested in running. Uh, I mean, I looked at it when I thought, well, I'd, I'd like to be a city commissioner. And then I looked and saw it's a two-year term, I was very surprised that it was only two years. So, I did a little research, and Ms. Charlotte supplied a lot of data on it. This came about back in seventy-one, seventy-two was when that was written. We still have language in our charter that, when it talks about what do you do to run, it says, oh, you pay thirty-five bucks. Well, we all know that's not the case, because the Florida statute has moved forward and kept up with the times. Uh, and I'm not gonna spend a lot of time today, now that I found out that we can't even get it on the ballot if we wanted to in this next cycle. But I, I think we should start as a community, talking amongst ourselves and figure out, uh, do we still wanna stay, uh, at two-year term? And if that's what the citizens of St. Joe prefer, then we'll stay at two years. But I think we would be doing ourselves an injustice not to at least open up and start talking about the pros and the cons. Uh, there's, there is some benefits to the four-year term. And, and I know that I've had a couple of friends of mine remind me that, that the downside is, well, what if you get someone in there that you don't want in there, you're stuck with them for four years? I get that. Uh, but we have to deal with that with nearly every elected official, uh, not only in the county, but in the state of Florida as well. So, all I'm doing is, is asking that we start talking about it, and we start looking at it. It's not gonna happen, uh, this next cycle, uh, but maybe, uh, the following cycle, we could, uh, have the time to speak. We may end up having a workshop on it. Uh, I would, and I still support the idea that Mr. Smiley had suggested, that we entertain the ability to allow people to take petitions. Currently, it's five hundred and something dollars, and that's based on a portion of the salary that's paid. That's how that comes up, that's also from the Florida statute. Uh, eventually, I think we're gonna direct our attorney to look at, uh, language that says the city of St. Joe should just be following the statutes. And that's saying the statute gives you two ways, one petition, one percent of the number of voters, or you pay three percent, I believe, of the salary, and that's where they come up with the five hundred bucks. So, I will support, uh, opening up to allowing, uh, future, uh, people to, to go with the petitions. But, uh, we can do that as a, uh, and, you know, just something that, that the attorney can have time to look at the language and come back maybe to the board with some, uh, suggestions.
I'll put that for you next week?
That's where we're at.
I would, I would support that, uh, as far as the petition and the, and the qualifying fee situation goes. Uh, the four-year term definitely has merit. Uh, of course, I'm sitting out there, I can see the downside of it, uh, also, but, but, you know, I'm going on my eleventh year, and I'm still learning, there's a lot to, there's a lot to learn to, to make it work, work for you and the community. So, but I'm, I'm good with, uh, let's keep talking about it, and, but the, the petition part, I, I think, uh, I'd like to see it come back to us for, for a vote.
If for nothing else, we need to update the, the language in our charter that says, in order to run, you pay thirty-five dollars.
I think. Follow the state statute anyway, so I don't.
Right, we have no, we have to follow the, the guidelines of the Florida statute.
I stand suspicious, just do it, just follow the state statute.
Any of those changes would have to be put on the ballot, right, under our charter?
Not, not the one dealing with the petition process, the four-year term definitely have to be by the.
And that's the only way I would support it, is if the people had opportunity to voice their opinion, if they wanted the four years. And you've heard me say before, I'm not asking in any way to extend anyone's term of office that's currently sitting up here. It's just something to think about, that's all I have.
I, I don't, I mean, yeah, my first two-year term, it took me about a year to really figure out what, what's going on. Still learning, of course. Um, but, uh, four years is a long time, uh, and I don't, I'm not so sure if I could support that. Um, I would just, I definitely wanna hear from everybody, uh, beforehand.
First two years, you learn your acronyms, that's it, that's what you learn your first two years.
Anybody else? Okay, let's move on, next item on the agenda, ship program.
Ship program request, if you turn to page sixty-three and sixty-four, uh, you have a request from, just call the ship program in reference to impact fees.
Okay. Any comments, motions, what have you on the ship request?
I support the idea of helping, uh, the applicant. I think that language needs to be much more clear and understanding if we're going to go into a, uh, an agreement with the county up in the ship program. I think it's a great idea, uh, to help. I think this would be a city's part in partnering with the ship program. Uh, I just, I think we have learned our lesson. First, we have to have it in writing, and we have to be real clear and precise. And, and this request was a little bit confusing. I talked to Jim about it today, and he said that, uh, I'll let you explain what you think the actual wording should be.
I think they had the, um, a lot of the language in there, but our acronyms are a little bit different than what we were talking about before. You have impact fees, you have tap fees, and then you have actual costs associated with equipment in there. Prime example, if somebody comes and gets water and sewer today, you've got impact fees. You have tap fees, which cover your cost of your water meter. You have grinder pump fees and ones that are low-pressure systems, and you may have bore costs. To simplify this process, what I would suggest is that you apply it to impact fees. That does not have a real cost associated with a piece of equipment. Yes, it is tied into your debt service and those type of things, but I believe you could justify if you wanted to tweak the amount of the impact portion.
And that's probably five thousand.
Five thousand dollars is what that costs you approximately, therefore your water and your sewer impact fees.
Is that an average, or is that a set cost?
Uh, that is a set cost for this, it's based on your meter size. A standard three-quarter inch house is approximately five thousand.
What's everybody comfortable with, I mean, the total amount, or? I, I think we, it would help tremendously if we can waive the impact fees, five thousand dollars, uh, get folks back in their homes, get their homes repaired, uh, what, what have you. Uh, and, and actually, I think that's what they're asking for, they just didn't ask for. It says, uh, uh, where did it go?
Last paragraph is way off.
Yes, what, yeah, um, with the exception of actual equipment cost, and so.
That's what tap.
All our equipment cost, the tap fees, grinder fees, and bores.
You may have to have an distinction to somebody, depending where the house is going, there could be more costs.
So, so, uh, to help them out, I'd entertain a motion, we waive impact fees and send it to the county, and, and, uh, hopefully that's what they were asking.
It, it appears too, it's just for the HHRP, it's not for any ship.
That's what I was gonna ask you, how do you want to define this? Is this gonna be for this specific program, or are you gonna say all ship qualified, ship-approved recipients?
I think, uh, Commissioner Lowry is right, it's just this program where they've got an appropriation from, from the state for. I don't remember how much, I mean, millions it was, but.
So, they would need to show proof to, to us that they have been approved for that funding as well.
Yeah. HHRP only.
HHRP only.
And that's what they're asking? Anybody? Any other comments?
How's it, Mayor, you won't get any arguments out of me?
Well, we need a motion to, uh, to waive the impact fees for the HHRP program, which is. Well, we need a motion to waive the impact fees for the HHRP program, which is administered under the county ship program. Is there a second?
I said.
Second, Mr. Langston. Any further discussion? Discussion from the audience? All in favor, aye? Aye, both, same sign, most of the past five of them.
Next item we have, Mayor, is a request for a conveyance of property requests. You turn over to page sixty-five and sixty-seven. Property that's in question here is a piece of property on the Highway ninety-eight frontage in front of the current owner of property. It actually belongs to the city. If you're looking at it, there's actually a sign now currently that is for the welcome center there. If that's what you have there, we'll look at that.
Jim, the parcel, what's highlighted blue is the actual parcel that you do not own. Is that correct?
That is the privately owned parcel.
So between Highway ninety-eight and that blue line is what we're talking about?
Yes, right.
I'd love to see the history of how we ended up with it. I don't know how much it is, but it does have some value because it's highway frontage.
And in the past, we've had Sabrina Burke, who has actually been the one that's been our listing agent when we had property before over there. She sold several pieces before. That's something to look at there. Not sure if you want an appraisal survey. We don't have any of that stuff on.
I don't know how you would appraise an unbuildable lot that's really only valuable to the contiguous property owner, but there should be some sort of value to them.
Oh, yeah. That I'm not sure.
What has the city done in the past? I just can't envision the city getting land away.
The properties that we have had equipped that we were trying to get rid of in the past, we turned over Sabrina Burke probably, what, four or five years ago. The board has the property they wanted to get rid of, so we had actually went out to look at local realtors, and Sabrina was big four or five years ago. That's what we've got in the past.
So there's been times in the past that a private person or group of people asked for property that was owned by the city to be deeded to them?
They've asked several of them. This is a little different on the conveyance here, because it's not a right-of-way or a, we've had, one example we had that was a little different was a right-of-way. If you remember, we had the end of, was that Seventh Street? That was actually a city roadway. This is actually a physical piece of property, so it's a little different. And what we've done in the past, when people question about, another sample is Woodbridge property. We have neighbors over in that area that want to buy those lots. So if you really want to sell a piece of property, you probably want to go to a realtor.
So they're asking for an airship, if not.
It's fifteen feet, I think.
And not.
They own that.
Oh, they own that. So this makes their property more valuable.
I have no idea what the value is on it.
Yeah, yes, people are right. But currently, they're not really talking value, they're just wanting us to donate the land.
They want you to give it to them.
Well, my, I mean, if we do that, then I feel like we would have to donate the land on the other requests.
It's that impression, for sure.
Yeah, that's my only concern.
Yeah, we can't be giving land away, you know, good guys.
Do we need a realtor, or is this something that you can ask them what they're willing to give, and they come back to the board with an offer?
That's up to the board. This is the first I've seen of it.
My thought, we're probably going to have to put it out there.
See if anyone else wants it.
And take bids. That's my thought would be the fair.
And that was the reason what we did before, turning it over to a realtor or somebody. That way, it gives us arms-length as to what that price, negotiation price is, or a sealed bid, yes.
If we give it to a realtor, we have to come up with a price to have it listed.
Yeah. Can't do anything with it.
But currently, we just need to decide, are we going to give them the property?
As to what the item is on the agenda.
And then we can figure out what.
Yes, if you were to.
Yeah.
So we entertain a motion to deny the request, and we can.
Motion to deny the request.
Okay. And there's, I'll second that. And the second, by the way, Mr. Ashford, any more discussion? We can talk about what we're going to do with it later if you want, but for now, that's the agenda item. There's a motion and a second, discussion, discussion from the audience. All in favor, aye? Aye, 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 same sign, most of the past five of them. All right.
The next item we had is in reference to IndyDwell. Commissioner Ashford, want to talk to you today about it?
Yeah, I went to a meeting last week sometime, and they were talking about the factory that they're trying to place on Arizona Chemical Property. And Gary's here today to talk to us about some possible funding questions, as far as going after grants and kind of the timeline.
I go. Gary Madison, one-on-one, Allen, one-on- twelve, not yet. Nine oh eight, Sixteenth Street. Port Authority's been in discussions with a couple of different parties over the last several months. We've been in discussions with Bright Community Trust, which is a nonprofit, large land trust in the state of Florida, a company called IndyDwell Homes, which has partnered up with the Bright Trust people. They have formed a company called IndyDwell Florida. What the project consists of is, we're looking to put a factory on the port property at the Arizona Chemical site. This project would have kind of a dual source for the county. One, it would create jobs in the factory, and two, it would be a possible housing solution for all those affected by Hurricane Michael. The project is about a thirteen million dollar project. There's approximately two million, just two and a half million of prep work on the site. There's about eight million in building the factory building, and then another three million, which IndyDwell Florida would put in to buy materials and to outfit the factory. There, the factory would be building modular houses, steel-structured houses, that range from anywhere to single-family units, two-bedroom, one-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom, to multiple-family units, fourplexes, even, they've even built apartment complexes out of these steel structures. They are rated for efficiency. Three-bedroom, average energy bills, like forty bucks a month. They were showcased on the mall in Washington. Ben Karns actually did a YouTube video about these houses that you might look up. What they're looking to do within the factory is a four-line factory. Each line would, for one shift, would hire thirty people. There'd also be twelve to fifteen managerial-type positions available. Eventually, they would like to get to four lines working two shifts, which is a lot of jobs for this area. Their philosophy is that they want their workers to be able to afford the houses they're building. So these houses are typically twenty to forty percent less than the stick-built, and probably even more with what we're paying for stick-built nowadays in this area. What we're looking to do at Port Authority is apply for a grant from Federal Economic Development Agency. That grant would be approximately eight million dollars. It would also apply to Triumph Coast for about two million dollars, in order to get the prep and the factory up and built. The factory would be, basically be a steel modular building structure, which, the time to put the factory on the property would be about four months. They're looking at a timetable, once we got the funding to move forward, that within a seven-month period, they can start building these houses. What I think we're here to ask the city is to partner with us in providing help in applying for the EDA and the Triumph grants. Mr. Gray Dodge from Madison Street Strategies is here, help representing IndyDwell Florida. And if y'all have questions, he can go into further details about the project and what they're looking for.
Gary, you're just asking us to partner with you, or not right now? I mean, is there any match money associated or anything like that?
No, we're looking just for the EDA grant, plus the Triumph funds, and possible funds from the Florida Port Authority Council, Epsid funds.
Now, they, we get grants, we build a building, they furnish it and get ready to go to work. Are they going to pay the port rent to?
They're going to, they're going to lease the building from the Port Authority. So it will also generate revenue to the Port Authority.
That was my question, what my thought process was, who's going to own the building? If we go in with you guys, are we going to be part owners, or county?
Well, what we're looking, what we're looking for is support in writing the grants. The Port Authority would own the building on the Port Authority land, and would lease it to IndyDwell. If something happens down the road, IndyDwell doesn't make it, then we still have that asset to lease out to another business opportunity. They're also looking, and we're utilizing them, they're looking at a two-hundred-mile radius from Port St. Joe, and servicing with these houses. They're also looking to put a plant in Jacksonville, a plant in here, I guess Orlando or Tampa, and one, another one in South Florida, maybe eventually another one up here in the Panhandle. So they're looking to expand their operations, and they're also interested in the shipping channel, to be able to barge these to the Caribbean, South America, et cetera.
Interesting. Do they currently have a place where they're building them now?
They currently have a couple of factories. The original factory is in Idaho, and then they currently have another factory in Colorado. This would be the first southern factory that they would have built, and because of the situation with Hurricane Michael, they felt like this was a need in the area, not only with the housing issue, but also with the jobs issue.
Gary, one of the things that I found interesting, too, when I was listening to him speak, was how quickly they can shift gears. In case of a disaster, they can start pumping out bunkhouses for volunteers and things of that nature. And that kind of piqued my interest a little bit, too, how they can, they're going to help support storm efforts and things around, so.
Correct. And their philosophy is, they're training these people, and initially, once the factory was started up, you know, before it was up and running, the people they hire, they would take out to Idaho and train them at the current factory out there. And they feel like these people, once they get back here and start working, they're going to work under a supervisor that will help them hone their skills. And down the road, they can even go out into the public world and work, you know, if they were doing cabinetry in these houses, they can go out and work with other groups. So it's kind of a training effort as well.
What's the, what's the average pay?
They start out at about sixteen dollars an hour, sixteen to twenty dollars an hour, depending on your position on the line. So they're good-paying jobs for our area.
So you're looking at full capacity, just one shift, at four lines, one hundred and twenty.
Hundred and twenty jobs, right.
So. Need jobs, we're going to have to have somewhere for these guys to stay once they get here.
Well, that's, they're going to build houses for them to stay. Okay. Well, and down the road, another situation that they might talk to the city about is, the city has some donated property from St. Joe Company that was donated for housing, where they could possibly put a subdivision in, both for purchase and for rental. But that's down the road. First, we've got to get the factory up and running, and things going in the right direction.
Right, right. Commissioner Lowery, you have?
Gary, where's your board on support on this?
They're a hundred percent behind it. We're looking for revenue.
Gary, you loud and clear.
You have one question for Gary? I think we have some, one from the audience. Come up, please, ma'am.
Hi, Cassie Settle. I met Frank back every time to IndyDwell. It was one of the things, you know, I'm sending out tons of emails for help, working with the CBCT, and it was, how to keep Frank's connected with me through, I believe, IndyDwell Board. It is a great, great program. It is wonderful what he's trying to do, and he's trying to brighten this town here. And hands down, it's, the connection or ties or anything of this, of that nature, he is good people, and it's a great program. I just wanted to say that.
Appreciate it.
Great, you got anything you want to throw in?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. I'll sign in. Gray Dodge here, representing IndyDwell, Florida. We're excited to work with the city here. We're excited. We've been talking about factories across Florida. We've already been in the works in one in central Florida. After Hurricane Michael, our strategy shifted a little bit. Still working on bringing that one up to speed, but really wanted to prioritize the Panhandle, help with the recovery, bring jobs to the area, high-paying, quality jobs. We want to build a product that the people in our factories can actually afford to purchase, so they can be there, they can work, starting at sixteen an hour, full benefits, average of twenty an hour, full benefits, and actually talking about in the future, creating a program where they can work to afford one of these properties themselves and actually live in those communities. So we're prioritizing Panhandle factory, we want to get that up and running and bring jobs as soon as we can. So happy to partner with Gary and bring this to Port St. Joe. Really excited about the potential for it. Gary, answer any questions again?
Another question I have in my mind, we go out, we get the grants, we build a building, and you guys change your mind. We're left with a building, and they find something to do with it, but my point is, at the time we get the building built, you guys don't have any skin in the game, and so.
They're going to put three million dollars into the project.
In what way would?
We're just building, the building's just going to be a shell.
Right, right.
They're going to have to put three million dollars into it, to put all the stuff.
Well, yeah, and that's my question. We build a building, and they have a change of heart, and they don't furnish it for a factory, which we intended for, so that's my point. At the point we get the building built, at that point, you have no money in the game.
We have to obviously enter into a long-term lease with the building before we even begin the construction process, so.
Right.
We'll have that.
We're looking at a twenty-year lease minimum.
Well, I think also, there's some stipulations in the Triumph funding that would safeguard, and I would, I would think that all of the parties would be mentioned in the application for Triumph, saying that if your company decides not to move forward, you may very well indeed owe money back to Triumph for not producing the jobs.
And they have agreed to any call back provision from Triumph. And actually, what, basically what we're asking is, we don't have any administrative capabilities to handle a grant, and so we're basically looking at the city for those administrative capabilities. We're not looking to the city to buy this building.
Right.
We're just looking for support, and if we're unable to get it at the city, we'll go to the county, and we'll go to the EDA, and, you know.
As far as.
We'll find somebody that can help us do the grant.
I'm not clear on who would actually be making the application. Would that?
The Port Authority.
Okay, you're just wanting the blessing of the city to support the application?
Support the application, and then provide us with administrative capabilities to submit the application. Now, on the Triumph application, IndyDwell Florida would be a party to it in guaranteeing the call back.
And it may depend on the feedback we get from the EDA. The city may be required to be a co-applicant with the Port Authority. Private. Private entity cannot apply for an E D A grant. It has to be public. It has to be a publicly owned structure. So what the E D A is gonna wanna look for is the ability to not only apply, but have the long-term grant management, which we know that the city has the capacity and capability of. So we would look for a partnership with the city and the port.
Gary, what, what guarantees do we have? If there's any actual expense incurred with the administration of this grant, that we can get that back? Is there, would you guys be willing to write something in that says we can recruit that funds out of rents until they're recovered?
Depends on how much money we're talking about.
Well, that depends on our decision too. How much money are we talking about, so? There'd have to be a way, I think, for us to recover, you know, the money that's actually spent.
I'd, I'd have to ask that by the board. I couldn't answer that on my own.
Plus, we, we, we have talked, our grant writer.
Right.
Also see what charges, if any, that would be.
And a lot of the work has been done by Wright Community Trust. They've, they've put together a lot of the information for the grants. So the assistance from them as well.
I think it's a great project. It's just a lot of money, but right now it doesn't appear it's gonna cost us anything to say. More than we said more.
Yeah, one of the issues that we're facing is with the E D A, we've gotta get the grant in quick. They are, there's a time limit that they're accepting grants for this type of project. And so we would initially, with the help of the Community Trust, what they've already done, we would initially need to start working on it pretty much immediately.
Can I assume, Gary, that you'll be giving the city a pretty much finished product that we just need to ink our signature on, is what I'm hearing?
Yeah, I believe so.
We've done a lot of the background. We collaborate with your grant writers to make sure it's a finished product. And we've written E D A grants. My partner and I, working with IndyDwell, both came out of D E O. We're familiar with these grants after Hurricane Michael, Hurricane Irma, Hurricane Matthew. So we've been involved with this for a long time. We would love the city's support. We need to as, as co-applicants with the port to work with your grant writers. But we've done the due diligence, we've done the background. We can give them all that to where they really need to overview, tweak a couple of things, sign off on it, submit it.
My initial thought, Mary, when this was brought up, you know, I follow Bill Kennedy. He's submitted and written E D A grants in the past before his E D A grant from back in the past. So he's got experience as well that can help us out.
No doubt. So what's the pleasure of the board, Bill? Move along.
I think the jobs along, Merritt, at least looking at this, and unless some red flag comes up that I'm, I'm just missing right now. We need jobs. We got people that would love to go to work for $16, $20 an hour.
The board's been looking at it for eight, 10 months now.
It sounds like a lot of welding jobs.
Yes.
I mean, we, we.
Quite a bit of welding jobs.
You know, we have to do welding classes and then we walk.
There, there is.
We've had talks with the Gulf Coast State College of Training Programs and we wanna make this as easy as possible to get people to work. Shorten the timeline of training, get them in there, they can train under supervisor and continue their kind of on-the-job training.
Yeah, Al Ambrian, the Red Cross, have been involved relative to the education.
I think the only thing I'd probably add to that, City Manager, you, you got any questions or concerns or anything?
Once we get into it, I'm not real sure. This is the first I've heard this past week. Couple of questions come to mind. Most time when we apply for a grant, we have to have ownership. So I'm not sure what that question's gonna come out from, E D A or that. The other thing is, if it's just actually helping them out, what we can do is we can be in contact with our grant writer to see what a task order would be involving them. But that's easy to know if we get a phone call. That would be the first thing I would do.
Sure.
Maybe foster a joint.
I'm not sure what the grants require. I know a lot of times when we're applying through D E O or the F R D A grants, the first thing they ask, they wanna see ownership of the property.
We've already gotta lean on it.
Right. But, but, in your, in front of the town, Commissioner Langston?
Is there any, is there any kind of way that we can get with school board to, once we get this done, to implement the type of welding or building that you're gonna be doing? So when these kids get out of high school, they're already be trained and ready?
Right. That's, that's been discussions with the college and the educators.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to support the Port Authority in this.
Okay, motion to support IndyDwell project outside of the circle. Commissioner Lowry, any more discussion? Discussion from others?
Yes, I got a couple. I, I, I love the proposal, but the question is, that I have in mind is, in one, it would be, the, the job that you're gonna be creating, you say, well, about 60, 30, 60 per shift?
Initially 30, yeah, 30 per shift.
Per shift, okay. And what is gonna be the, the ratio in-town local versus bringing skill labor from, from out-town? So we wanna focus on?
It's gonna depend on who applies for the jobs. You know, hopefully it'll provide local people with the opportunity to apply for those jobs.
Because that's, that's, that's what, if we're gonna allow you to come in here, I, I'd really like to see some type of ratio. I know you can't guarantee it, but at least work for some ratio local. And we need to start getting those local trained right now. We can start getting those local trained.
Right.
Because we want, we want our people employed, not bringing people from our state, our, our county, our state. Now, we wanna focus on getting the locals.
And their, their whole purpose is to create jobs here locally.
And we hope, we local, we get priority.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
And I think they'd work with us on that.
Okay.
Yeah, I think they will.
And we'd love to do that. There's obviously a fine balance where we also don't wanna steal employees, current employees from other local businesses. So it's always a delicate balance of making sure people that are out of work. We also know a lot of people that are doing the dislocated worker grant jobs now, making 15 bucks an hour, working in recovery. Those jobs are gonna come to an end within a year, about the time our factory gets online. And that's about 100 people so far that we can then shift over into the factory and get them trained. So we wanna make sure that we get a lot of good local jobs without damaging or, you know, affecting any other businesses existing, construction companies that are here.
Good deal, good deal. Okay. All in favor, I?
I.
Both same side, most passed five of those. Let's get it, let's get it done. All right.
Public Works?
Mayor, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Last meeting the board directed Chief Herring and myself to reach out to F D O T to determine what we might be able to use to prevent left turns in both Hungry Howies and McDonald's. We did that. We reached out to gentleman Traffic Operations in Chipley, Brian Pettis. And Brian has provided, I believe you guys have a photograph of a curb and delineator system.
Yes, sir.
That F D O T has said was very effective in both Animal City as well as Chipley. And they offered that as, you know, an option for this board to, to consider.
Well, it's been needed for a long time. And when Commissioner Langston brought it up about the school bus slamming on brakes, that really brought it back in focus for me. And it's a safety issue. I mean, it's just accident waiting to happen and we're gonna be blamed if we don't.
That's right. And both Chief Herring and myself believe that, you know, this particular item is certainly different than what we'd had in the past. It gives you that, with the curb being built in, it gives you that, you know, appearance that, okay, it's, it's a structure now. You know, rather than just running over the delineators, so.
Right.
Again, if the board just, you know, wishes to move forward, we just need to know how you feel so we can contact D O T and move forward.
Can we commit to having extra delineators, like Chief volunteer to replace them as they get broken?
I thought I volunteered John.
Yeah, no. As much as I would love for that to happen, a, a local contractor would, you know, would do that.
How much are they?
$23,000.
No, 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 no. That would, that would be, you know, D O T, you know, instructing the, the local group to put it in. It's a process.
So we don't have a profit sheet?
There's no.
Oh, you mean they don't? I can't tell you. Maybe they're gonna give us something or not.
They gave us a traffic box.
That's fantastic.
Wow, okay. I'd entertain the motion to move forward.
Motion to move forward, being that it's free.
Commissioner Hopkin made the motion to go forward with delineators.
Reluctant to second.
There's a reluctant second. He, he must turn across there on a pregnancy basis.
They just get ugly looking.
All right. Any further discussion? All in favor, I?
I.
Both same side, most passed five of those. All right. Anything else, John?
No, sir. Less questions for me.
I know we're advertising for six employees. So, Ms. Charlotte, when does that advertisement end?
31st.
The 31st, wow, okay.
And just as an update, the bridge was installed last week. I'm sure most of y'all have seen it.
That looks something like unbelievable.
The paving should be complete this week and then we'll overseed and, you know, it's done.
I'd, I'd like the, the guys to start thinking about while we're on that, to eliminate the, the wooden bridge that runs parallel to 20th, right next to 20th. Just eliminate that. It's a maintenance nightmare. It's not really needed that much. You can cross and go to the path. Cross back and then maybe look at pricing the bridge. It goes over to the island of Buck Griffin that connects to the other side. Another metal. So think about that and let's talk to John, let's just consider. It's not a big need right now. It's more.
Mayor, it is a safety issue at this point. Would you be wrong to just get rid of it?
Yeah.
It needs to do that part, make it out?
Yeah, we can ask John.
Why don't we ask you?
Trying to figure out how to make that happen.
You almost had to basically do it.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's out there. It's not like we can just reach it, you know?
Yeah. You'd probably have to get it out.
We, we can certainly look. If anything, we can remove the first 10.
I can get John Ford in the fire department to move it for us. We'll set it fire. Then try and just put it out.
That's, that's not a bad idea.
I'll bring it to water.
It'll only burn the water line.
That's right. But anyway, let's, let's look at that and see what we can do about it.
Sure.
Okay. Anything else for John? All right, Mr. Kevin, that's your, your thing on the vehicle. I'm not jumping over Larry.
We, we've had for a couple of years, you know, the budget for vehicles, S U V being the right choice for us because of the sampling that we do, the stuff in the back, we just need that space. The vehicles that are priced out as Nissan, and they don't make one directly for the state. They just make the base vehicles. That's their, their share department, state price. So what you get is just a regular retail vehicle. So it's got a little more than, you know, some of the other trucks we've been ordering. I think it's the right choice for us.
Is it in the budget?
It is in the budget. For me and for Larry, we're basing one.
That's okay.
Is this for two vehicles and one for each?
One for each, correct. One for each department.
That's, that's a good price.
Motion to approve.
There's a motion to approve by Commissioner Ashbrook, there's second. Commissioner Langston, second. Any discussion? It's in the budget. Everybody knows that. All in favor, I?
I.
Both same side, most passed five of those. All right. Okay, let's see. So we got both of them in one flat. Anything else for either one of you guys?
Nothing else to add.
Okay. Everything okay?
We're doing, we're pushing water out, doing well. So we're liking the stainless steel filters. There's a whole lot of work to get there, but it's working like a champ.
Doing your job.
Mm-hmm. And they're doing well.
Mr. Larry, how's the, the backwash study coming?
Well, actually, they sent me a draft and I have a preliminary engineering report on the pilot study. So that's what we're working on right now. Just let you.
That's a good, that's a great thing that you're doing right there.
Well, we hope to save some money for the city.
All right, Mr. Mike?
I, I don't have anything for the board. Mr. Board has some questions for me.
Question for Mike. FEMA still working with you?
Still, still working FEMA and insurance. We've, we're probably more than halfway on obligated. I think we've actually received about $680,000 from FEMA and we still have.
Since the storm or in total?
No, just, just FEMA. Just FEMA, since the storm, yes.
That's what, yeah, just FEMA.
Just FEMA, yes, sir. But we're still working those projects. For instance, the police department is still one that's open, that, that's active, that we're working.
Do you feel pretty good about that, talking to the, to the FEMA guy?
Uh, I do, absolutely, yes. And, and a lot of those projects, they've, they've indicated that if the costs come in, when we do make the repairs, that they will up the recovery to the actual cost of the project.
We can get the job done in anticipation of getting the money back from FEMA. Whatnot, we won't have to wait for FEMA.
That's correct. Yes, sir, absolutely.
Play the show game a little bit and get the money.
And I could certainly give you a summary of our recovery by site, but for both insurance and FEMA, if you'd like to see what we have available for each site.
That'd be great.
When did FEMA respond as far as the G C V?
Well, those, those bids came out, they went over the water, they came back, it was $450,000 and $600,000 in recovery. They, they would not go online and say, you know, we sent those bids back to them. They did not come back to us and say, yes, we approve, you go ahead and spend this $450,000. They said, as long as the bids followed guidelines and they were reasonably cost and, and reasonable and we followed the process, then, then they would up the recovery amount. Now, we've not gone through and submitted anything like that to them. Maybe the police station might be the first, the first one that we can do that to see if they are going to honor those inflated repair costs. What we did do was we, we did take the, the $450,000 low bid and send it to our insurance provider and asked them if they would up the recovery on, on that. They've not come back with a final answer on that, but they said they would look at it. Now, we did the same with our, our three large sewer lift stations. We got it together with Clay and John and we calculated estimated construction costs for those sewer lift stations and we sent that into insurance. And, and they're, they're working those numbers now. They've not given us a final answer on, on that. So there's still some uncertainty with FEMA and whether or not to go out and spend $450,000 on something that they calculated the cost at $160,000 or $180,000. So I, you know, it's, it's a lot for us to stick our neck out for $250,000 on, on the word that FEMA's saying they will up the ante if the costs are real and valid and followed our guidelines. So that's where we are on the provision. Hopefully, we'll have an answer from insurance shortly and then we can know where to go with those items.
Any questions for Mike? Moving on, thanks. Mr. Glaser, the engineer?
Yes, sir. Very brief. The paving and cliffersons part is scheduled to begin next week. Contractor today on that, so we'll order that beginning of next week. And then the trail lighting that Mr. Anderson sent, the board approved at your last meeting, or to the county, so they can send it up to the grant post to make sure there's no issue or any personal. I don't anticipate there being any of us who can drive back and pull the light or pull it, send it to Duke Engineering to start the lights. And that also kind of triggers how we can kind of begin the rest of the grant, which is actually the trail. We've been waiting on it until we got the light thing issue that we have with them. So those are the updates I have for you, unless you have a question.
How much money's left in that trail grant roughly?
Good question. I don't think any has been spent, so I think it's 200,000, 200,000?
Two or 250, if 40 was, 40 was matched, 160,000 grant, I think it's the breakdown.
We just need to be prepared to focus on, on applying that money to the actual trail as soon as these other steps are done.
Yes.
Clay, what about, any progress with Clay Kennedy and you guys working on digitizing the Public Works ad belts?
We went over and looked at the, the rule of drawing. Started putting it together. And then, actually, Mr. Grant, we found some work that had been previously done many years ago. So after that, we hadn't really digested, okay, what's already been done. It seemed like some of them may already be done.
Right.
We just gotta see what that means. So yes, sir, there has been, I don't have a number for you or an amount of that yet, but we are working.
You see what we're dealing with, though, daily basis?
See this stat?
Yeah. It's, it'd be great if we get that done.
Okay.
Anybody? Okay, thanks, sir. Code enforcement, I think our special master got his first hearing today, I believe.
Is she scheduled?
I think so. I think there's, I think they're this week.
Yes, I know it's, I thought it was today, maybe, but anyway. So we're moving along and Mr. Langston said it best, free pickups open. So please, everybody, work with us. Don't put stuff out beside the road that doesn't belong there. Don't put stuff out beside the road that doesn't belong there. Yard waste, four by four by four parcel that BCC will pick up. If John has to pick it up, you're going to get a bill for it. We hate it, but just trying to get the city looking for it. Yes, sir, please.
The county did come around and picked up a lot of folks on the north side. I don't know if they did over south, south end of town, but they did a great job. But hey, it's starting, it's starting to come right back out there. And it's just getting ridiculous. We're not going to pick it up for free. We're going to charge. So just remember that. That's all.
Anybody else? Okay. Chief?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have anything. I would just say that I personally appreciate y'all voting for those delineators in. They will help, let's see.
Appreciate you working with John and.
I appreciate John.
Making sure that they're far enough that folks won't.
John really did all the work.
Okay.
And I've never seen DOT respond that quickly, so.
That's, yeah. So we can note down this week that we're ready to go forward. We'll see, see how fast they work then. Hopefully, they will. Any questions for the chief? And also, we need to get together on your furnishings for, you know, so we can get a bid out, specs out for that. So just not mahogany and cherry wood and all that.
Mayor, can I speak on that just real quick?
Yes, sir.
I felt like I needed to interject something. You know, early the board voted to go out and, you know, take bids on that building.
Yep.
But we don't have a clear and concise plan as to what we're doing yet. So I would just throw it out there, if the board wants to consider it, let's spend, you know, fifteen hundred dollars and get a draftsman to put it on paper. Everybody's bidding on the same thing.
So things we have to thought about, I don't know if you want to hear that, hear it from me now, but.
Yeah.
Those stairs that go upstairs, they got twenty-plus years old, they're not in code. We've had two officers follow down them. So we need to, we need to take those out, put decent stairway in upstairs. So we need to, if we're going to spend the money, we need to.
I agree. And we, if there are draftsmen available, let's do that. I think Jim might be within his threshold without a bid. He can just ask him to do it. We want to do it right, there's no doubt about that.
All of the companies that bid last night went out of town, I'm pretty sure. So it'll probably be the same way. And they all asked for bid specs, and we were like, I'll walk you around and show you. Which I can do, I don't mind doing that, but it's better if it's on paper.
Let's try to do it, do it right, get it going. Thank you, John, for just interjecting that. Okay, Ms. Charlotte?
Yes, sir. In your packet, page seventy-three, you have an election schedule. This has been done over with the supervisory elections, and the dates provided by him. So I'll give you an overview of what we're looking at this year.
Okay. All right. I got a copy of that, aware of that. It's on the city website, I'm sure.
I will double check.
Okay. Please, please make sure it is.
Right.
Okay.
Sir, just before my Quita Thompson left, she asked if we could read this. She had to go to a meeting. May I read this?
Here you go. Okay.
It just says, save the date. Are you interested in improving health and overall quality of life in Gulf County? If so, join us at the upcoming Community Health Improvement Partnership meeting. Together, we will decide how to best address and improve the following selected priorities. Address to care, mental health slash substance abuse, inactivity socioeconomics. Meeting day Wednesday, January twenty-second, 2020, from nine thirty a.m. to eleven Eastern Time. Location, Florida Department of Health in Gulf County Conference Room. Just a friendly reminder to refresh your memory, our vision is working together to empower Gulf County to improve quality of life for generations to come. We hope to see you there. Thank you.
Thank you. Everybody get the date on that.
Tomorrow, definitely.
Okay. Anything else, Mr. Pierce?
No, sir.
Okay. Citizens to be heard. Come forward, please, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Kim Miller, two-three-three-one State Road thirty A. I just have a couple of questions to ask. It's not been anything on the agenda today, but it's something that's going to affect the property owners in the county, but it does have something to do with the city. In 2018, after Hurricane Michael, some of Gulf County residents learned that we were converted from lighthouse utilities to city water temporarily because of issues with the system. Who is responsible for notifying the citizens of that change in our service and where our water source is coming from?
I would think your provider, who is your provider? If they're lighthouse utilities, it's their responsibility to provide you with everything concerning the water they produce and you consume.
Okay, I thought so. I just wanted to click, I just wanted to be sure of that because we have.
Am I wrong? Okay.
Okay. And on that source, is, can you tell me where the T is located, where the water changes? Where there's like a, where that change was made, like physically located?
It's at the intersection of Jones Home Steel Road and LA2.
Okay, perfect, thank you. And also, is there any discussion with the city regarding the city purchasing or taking over lighthouse utility water system?
Not from me.
Not recently.
I've heard rumors about it, but if that come through us, I don't believe. I think it's just rumors.
Okay, all right. And then the other.
At the right price at the right time, it might be something we'd look at, yeah. We're always interested in making a little money.
Well, right now, I think it's losing a little bit, so you might want to look at it closely. And then the other thing, does it have anything to do with the water? I appreciate you clarifying that for me. The other thing is regarding the gateway apartments. When the discussion took place, and you gave us an update on the security calls that you get there from the local law enforcement. My question is, why would they not provide security, perhaps an onsite resident for security for that, for that particular location? Or at least contract security for people and alleviate that of the citizens bearing that so they'll have more time to focus on all the other calls for the rest of the community?
Good question. I think it probably come up at workshop, but I think there has been some discussion about an onsite law enforcement, them providing a apartment for law enforcement, but they didn't qualify.
Well, and that may be another thing, too. Until they do get the sidewalks that a couple of the other residents and citizens talk about, maybe that person also with security could also help that to make sure that people were able to get safely where they needed to go.
Good point.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment.
Mayor, I'm not sure what the terms are or whatever, but I'm, when I was over there, I know there's been a sheriff's office, sheriff's department car there.
Kayla Casterson, he's over for us. He's living there.
Okay.
Oh, he is there, sir? One living there, one.
Sheriff deputy.
Okay.
Well, I don't need to sign it again. I was just wondering, HGTV was launching a massive nationwide small town redo. And where are we on that? Have you heard about that?
Ask me that question one more time, please.
HGTV?
Okay.
Was looking into redoing a small town. And what, have you heard about that? Or have anyone heard about that? Well, they are.
We're, we're. We'd like to be a candidate, but I haven't heard. Mike was nodding his head that he's heard some of them.
You heard that?
I saw somebody post something on Facebook about it.
Yes.
Representing a website to go look at it. I didn't look at it.
That'd be fantastic. Anyway, we can apply for that.
That's what I was going, like, who did we contact?
Yeah, well, we'll, let's just check into that. Jim and Ms. Charlotte, if y'all get your HGTV Google or whatever and see if there's something out there that we can apply for, that'd be great.
Everybody else does.
It sure would. Thank you, ma'am. Yeah. All right. Anyone else? Okay, Ms. Christie, come on.
We can't let this time go by without congratulating Public Works for getting those bridges in.
That's something.
I mean, they had, y'all had a bid for like two hundred and seventy thousand dollars for three bridges. And Public Works went out and found a great bridge with, I guess, some of its recycled materials that, yeah, for what, twenty-six thousand dollars for one bridge? So that's, that's what the good news that the citizens need to hear and know. That's just extraordinary. So with some of the excess funds, and Mayor, I spoke to you about it. You know, I write my mind practically every day. And I've talked to you about what's going on down at Jetty Park. Those plastic garbage cans, they go blown over, and then the birds are everywhere, and they're just little flung rats. And I'm wondering, and I know that metal would corrode, but if there's some kind of containers that might be aluminum to just at least help stabilize those things that look a little nicer. I just, a red garbage can type.
And the other one over here.
That don't look very good. That just would. And then also, thank you for the information about the code enforcement. There are some neighbors in some roads that just do not look very nice, and some of the neighbors are getting a little tired of, and it has nothing to do with recovery from the storm. It's just, you're just, don't want to get off.
Incumulation.
Yeah. So whatever y'all can do to help with that, that would be terrific. And then I'm just kind of curious where we are for process and progress on the NERTA grant and the, you know, I know that the engineers had to go out. Do some ideas where they are with the plans?
I haven't heard from NERTA.
For the next public hearing in March, we have to be dating, but that's what we're shooting for.
Thank you, Clay. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
So those are the things. The other thing, that ice machine that is down, you drove by that.
On Los Al, Los Al.
Yeah.
That damage in the storm is two dollar ice.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Well, there's.
Code never.
We have, I'll get with Richie on it again.
Yeah.
Instead, we had actually had several discussions with the property owner and the businesses calling in.
Yeah, and my understanding is it's some guys over in Panama City that can afford to get that.
Okay.
All right. So thank you, thank you for the bridge.
Yeah, thank you, ma'am. Okay. Anyone else? Okay. Commissioner Hoffman, start for you. Oh, I did, sorry, Ms. Still.
I just wanted to go back to the commissioner qualifying the petition process. That was kind of.
You want to know what we did?
Yeah, what did you do?
We turned it over to the attorney. He's going to bring it back. He knows we want to promptly follow state guidelines, which is say, you can pay the money or you can qualify by petition. I think that's where we are, is that right, ma'am?
So is there, I just wanted to clarify, is there a date on bringing that back up?
He said next meeting.
Next meeting, I'll be there.
Next meeting? All right, thank you.
All right. I'll keep my head up this time. Anybody else? All right, Mr. Hoffman.
I don't have anything.
Okay. Mr. Lawrence, good.
I have nothing, Mayor.
I just want to say that it was a great turnout for the MLK walk. I was proud. I'm telling you, made me so proud to see how diverse the crowd was. And the speaker at the Washington Red, Mr. Lawrence, he was an ex-NFL football player. He did a great job.
He did.
And also the lighting in Washington Red, man, it's beautiful. It makes it so bright and clear in there. And second thing is that Mr. Joseph Peters, Dr. Joseph Peters, excuse me, he's having a financial literacy seminar and dinner. It's going to be Friday, February the seventh, at Gulf County Senior Citizens Building from four to six. Guest speaker will be R.D. Easton of Southern Financial Group. So I'm asking everybody to come out and listen to Dr. Peters. He's Marjorie Peters and Nathan Peters' son. And he does a great job teaching financial challenges, managing finances, adjusting your daily spending. I wish we could get a lot of kids out there, high school kids, college kids out there to get a better understanding of all these things. And I just want to tell them I appreciate you, Joseph, and keep doing a great job.
All right. What else? Is that it? Okay. The only thing I've got to be another broken record, our roads, streets are terrible. And I assure you, I'm thinking way outside the box to figure out, getting us some money to start a routine yearly road paving of some sort. At least fix one road somewhere every year. So with that, I'll entertain the most good, John. I'm moving on, all right.